Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This evening we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by village clerk Promote Shaw.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting will come to order and the clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Sutker.
Here.
Trustee Robinson.
Here.
Trustee Coon.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Pure Slowen.
Here.
Trustee Klein.
Here.
Mayor Wendusson.
Here. We have a quorum. Next item is approval of the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. A motion is in order. Trustee Sutker seconded by Trustee Coon. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody wants removed? Trustee Johnson.
I'd like to remove two things. I'd like to remove item four, the minutes from our last meeting, and item eight be the reappointments to the Ethics Commission.
Is there anything else anybody would like to have removed? If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Coon.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slowen.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Wendusson.
Aye. The motion passes. With that vote, I would like to thank and introduce Dr. Michael Gottsman. Doctor, if you... Dr. Gottsman will be on the Board of Health. Joseph Myers will be on the Human Relations Commission. Renone Gurley. And Kamani Levy. Kamani? Thanks to all of you for agreeing to be on a commission. I promise you, we will put you to work soon. And know that the work of the commissions are very important. And we appreciate everything that everybody does at all of these commissions. And so, thank you very much for your volunteerism. That's one of the things that makes the village function so well. So, thank you. Trustee Johnson, you had two things, number four and then eight.
Yeah, I'd ask that we look at the minutes of our last meeting. I'm kind of reluctant to vote to approve them as they are. These minutes, these are, this is the official record of our last meeting. We had a super unusual vote at our last meeting that I believe was called incorrectly. And I fear is kind of recorded incorrectly in our minutes. I think we all know the vote. It was a very unusual vote. And out of the seven of us, the vote was three ayes, three abstentions, one absence. Highly unusual vote. Our village code says pretty clearly that four affirmative votes are needed to pass any motion. And I know that this has been, kind of been being discussed since this meeting. So anyway, I'd, I'd like to kind of ask that we question this as it's recorded.
Was the vote legal? What's the law on that?
Well, that's what, under the Illinois Supreme Court, something that is called the principle of concurrence states that if somebody abstains, they concur in what is a majority vote, which means three, three to zero would be a majority vote. The three abstentions would be then counted as part of the majority, which would be six. What I have done is I wrote to the Consul General for the Illinois State Senate to ask for his opinion. The Supreme Court cases Prosser versus Fox Lake, in which the State Supreme Court made this determination. So, what we can do is put this in abeyance until we get a decision from the, from the Consul General. I originally was going to ask the Attorney General to render an opinion, but I, I was informed by his office that they don't do that. They don't give opinions on that, on applying Supreme Court cases to individual situations. The only other alternative then was either to make a declaration as the chair or write to the Consul General for the, and I think I sent a copy of my letter.
Yep.
Everybody got it. So, we can simply put approval of the minutes in abeyance until we get that decision. If that's what, it's up to the board.
I don't understand why. If, I'd like to ask Michael, do you concur with the, is what this is? The Supreme Court said that this, that what the mayor interpreted at the last meeting is correct?
The, there's no question that the Prosser case is the lead case to the Illinois Supreme Court. And, and it's clear under that case, as the mayor recited it and explained it, that the abstention, in fact, the Illinois Supreme Court goes so far as to indicate that elected officials really should not abstain. They should either vote yes or no. That's why they're elected and that's why they're put in their seats. And those are the tough decisions that they need to make. And that therefore, it's the view of the Illinois Supreme Court that an abstention can only be a mere reflection of the majority vote. So, what we're looking for is to make sure that the assessment that those three yes votes stand as the majority. The language within the code that some people have referenced would be secondary to Illinois Supreme Court decision in that regard. And the fact that it speaks to a majority does not necessarily require four, especially under Prosser. But to get a, an opinion from the Illinois State Senate individual who really governs this and to make sure that we're assessing both the law and the case law as well as our code seems to make sense. We point out, of course, that the minutes actually reflect, I have to find the right part. But the minutes actually made a statement of pending, pending confirmation. So it would seem to me that that would make it clear that one could always go back and amend them at a later time. It's generally better practice to approve minutes immediately after, you know, in the immediate meeting after. And I, I would think that the reference to pending, obviously, if the, if we were to get an opinion from downstate that was contrary, then we would want to revisit it and align it at that time. I think what was key and important is it says pending confirmation, which makes the intent of the board clear that you're seeking further opinion, but at least at this point, you want to follow the Supreme Court law. That would be my suggestion, but you can also just pass on it tonight, I guess. Passing on it isn't always healthy.
Let me just ask, is there a motion?
What, of what?
To approve the minutes as presented of the last village board meeting.
So move.
Is there a second? Trustee Sutker. Okay. Uh, Trustee Johnson, did you have anything further to add?
No.
Okay. Call the roll.
Trustee Sutker.
Based on the wording pending confirmation, I vote aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Same reason. Aye.
Trustee Coon.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
I'm going to vote nay.
Trustee Pure Slowen.
Based on the recommendation of pending, I vote aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Wendusson.
Aye. The motion passes. The Ethics Commission.
Oh, okay. Back to me. All right. So, this agenda item tonight is an appointment of two, reappointment of two members of our Ethics Commission, which only has three members. So this is, these two appointments tonight will constitute a majority of the Ethics Commission. So I kind of, I have kind of, I'm going to question this on kind of two fronts. I'm going to start with just a purely process front. I'm concerned because our village ethics code states pretty clearly that no person that is the subject of an ethics complaint can participate in any way whatsoever in the review of an ethics complaint or in the decisions in any way. Six of the seven members of the village board voting on these appointments tonight are the subjects of an ongoing ethics complaint that's being reviewed by the Ethics Commission next month.
They're not participating in the decision of the Ethics Commission. We're doing our duty.
The board is voting tonight on who will be reviewing an ethics complaint against the board, which is complicated. Is this, is this a conflict of interest?
No. No, our duty as sworn officials is to make appointments. And the recommendation is to appoint Rabbi Metankne and Jonathan Minkus, Minkus as chair. They will make the determination, as they have thus far, on any, in any, all complaints. Both Rabbi Metankne and Jonathan Minkus are independent. They're not the least bit political. I'm not aware that either of them has contributed politically in any way whatsoever, and they are independent.
No, I wasn't questioning, I was questioning more the role of...
And so, of course, we can make the appointment. It's our job.
Even, even the people who are subjects of a complaint that they're, that is being reviewed by this commission?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That happens in the, that's one of the things that the Congress does. They, they appoint people all the time.
I have this concern about process, but my biggest concern is about the performance of these two commissioners and whether they deserve reappointment. These are the only two village commissioners that I am aware of that have literally broken the law during the performance of their village duties. These two commissioners have repeatedly violated the Open Meetings Act. In May, two thousand and twenty-one, Commissioners Minkus and Metanki held an illegal meeting to discuss and dismiss an ethics complaint. They reviewed this complaint in a completely illegal meeting outside of village hall. No public notice, no public agenda, no notes, no written minutes, no opportunity for public comment. And under Chairman Minkus, it took the commission over two years to properly review this complaint in an illegal meeting. The same thing happened again the following year in October, twenty-two. Commissioners Minkus and Metanki held another illegal meeting to discuss and dismiss another ethics complaint concerning voter suppression. Again, same story, completely illegal meeting outside village hall. No public notice, no public agenda, no minutes, no opportunity for public comment. As I think we're all aware, they were forced to re-review these complaints after they were investigated by the Illinois Attorney General's Office for their open meetings violations. I think there's an argument to be made that they should not have been allowed to even finish their term after repeatedly breaking the law during their duties. So, why, why have Commissioners Minkus, Minkus and Metanki been nominated for reappointment?
Because both of them are men of extraordinary character and integrity. Once it was pointed out that the course of action that they were taking needed to be corrected, it was corrected. And it would be unfair to hold them to some kind of special standard. Neither of them were aware, and it's loaded to say, they broke the law. They were not aware. This, these were the first complaints that had ever been lodged. And in fact, there were, there were very few ethics commissions even in suburbia. And John, Michael, and I became aware. And when, when we did, we made sure that the chair was made aware. He didn't even realize it. And we went so far as to hire an outside counsel to be liaison. All of our commissions have staff liaisons. The Ethics Commission did not have one. So we hired outside counsel. And both of them are outstanding human beings. Rabbi Metankne is an educator who is well-known in the community as somebody who has nothing but the highest integrity. Jonathan Minkus has spent his entire professional career standing up for those who are disadvantaged. And neither of them has the slightest political agenda. A mistake was made. It has been rectified. And that, they certainly are not disqualified from, from continuing their service to the village, which I'm proud to say both of them are willing to do. And I think under the circumstances, they are deserving of a continued term on the commission.
Let me, let me ask about how this has been corrected. So, because Commissioners Minkus and Metanki have repeatedly violated the Open Meetings Act during the performance of their village duties, the village...
Un, please, unknowingly. Unknowingly.
Fair.
I mean, you have to be fair to people. They unknowingly go proceed.
The village has hired an outside attorney, as you mentioned, James Farillo, to essentially run this commission. This year, the village has been paying this outside attorney three hundred and fifty dollars an hour to manage our Ethics Commission, which is a purely volunteer, purely advisory commission. I would argue, Chairman Minkus, due to his mistakes as chair, because of these mistakes, the village has been paying someone three hundred and fifty dollars an hour to essentially kind of do his job for him. This attorney, James Farillo, is being paid by the village to attend commission meetings, to prepare agendas, to prepare public notices, to answer emails for the chair, to write determinations. In short, Minkus's tenure as the chair of our Ethics Commission has already essentially cost the village over twenty thousand dollars in legal fees. So, given that Minkus has been unable to chair this commission without paid assistance, why is, why is he being reconsidered for?
All of the commissions have staff liaisons. If you want to, the Board of Health has Mike Charlie. You can go on through every commission. And it, it's expensive. Farillo is not a member of the village staff. But if you were to add up the time that village staff puts in at each of the commissions, you look at the plan commission, you look at the reports that are written. The chairman of the plan commission does not literally write the plan commission reports. The I plan for the Board of Health was not literally written by the chairman. The chairs are the ones who give direction. And it's the staff that does the day-to-day kind of work and who we rely on. We rely on professional staff. And I think Minkus has, in fact, given the commission guidance. And he works very well with Mr. Farillo. I have not gotten any complaints from Mr. Farillo. And I'm assuming Mr. Minkus has no complaints because he hasn't said anything to me about it. Yes?
I would like to address the question. First, very briefly, I want to applaud Trustee Klein for his over and above duty at the backyard bash. He went over and above whatever he had to do. He served me a lot of orange juice. Thank you. Secondly, I'm offended by the first, I don't care about all the complaints Trustee Johnson filed, except the first ethics complaint, which took away my right to vote for him as an independent, someone outside of the caucus party. It deprived me of my right to vote to have a two-party system. That's why I'm offended. I'm not defending Trustee Johnson. I'm fighting for myself. Second, so I'm urging that Minkus and Metanki not be reappointed, only as a symbolic slap in the face to the mayor. Minkus is very nice. He dealt with me. Very gracious man. I like him. All things considered, he should be reappointed. Nothing against him. It's the thing I'm offended by is the poison that has been put into the system by the failure to act and investigate the first complaint filed by Trustee Johnson, which sought to deprive me and everyone else of a two-party system. It's poison that has been allowed to be in the system. It reverberates day by day. We're paying huge amounts of money to defend the Freedom of Information lawsuit. This whole electoral reform, which I actually agree with the mayor on it, was, the genesis was because of the antipathy generated by not acting on the first complaint. So it's reverberating, it's reverberating. The mayor is very friendly with me. I respect him. We have a very friendly relationship. He's treating me very nice. And I'm telling him, as maybe the court jester, to learn that he has to do something about this poison. And my opposition to the reappointment is just another symbolic act of the citizens standing up to say what the, inaction of the mayor is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, for the record, we need your name.
Fuck, my name?
Just for the record.
Oh, I am sorry. I got so...
That's all right. That's okay.
I apologize. Jerry Brozek, the Tribune got my name wrong last time. B-R-O-Z-K. I live in Optima. I apologize. Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you.
Hi, Rachel Van Hoes. I'm a little intimidated to say my name tonight. Just, you know, Commissioner, I don't know you've appointed to the Human Relations Committee, is sitting next to two gentlemen that one called me an it at the last meeting, and the other one had his hands on a woman on the steps of village hall. So, I came to make a short comment. Yeah, I'm a little rattled in this room right now. I question, and you know, when I ask a question, I don't need an answer. What is the regular schedule and timing of reappointments? And then I question the timing of the reappointments being on this date. Overall, the same as the last gentleman said, I have all the respect for the commissioners and no disrespect at all. I wanted to reiterate a comment I've made previously that I do believe strongly the Ethics Commission should be comprised of more than three individuals. There should be a full commission that represents all the diversity of our village. Right now, we don't have that in our current Ethics Commission and the makeup of it. So, that's... So that's what I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. A motion would be in order. Oh, of course.
I just feel strongly about the fact that these commissioners are volunteers. They look to us to guide them. I really kind of resent putting them in a position where they have to defend themselves, where you're saying they broke the law. I would just ask that you be, please, everybody be respectful of two commissioners that are volunteers, that are doing their best, that are outstanding residents of the community. It just, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I, I one hundred percent do not intend to question anyone's personhood, anyone's, um... Yeah, I, I'm, I would, I'm simply speaking about the performance of their duties as, as village commissioners. Last point I'll bring up, this is kind of an awkward point, but I would like to suggest that there's a conflict of interest with Chairman Minkus as chair, something that's been brought up at multiple commission meetings. I, I think you've all read, it was included in the ethics complaint, a FOIA'd email from Chairman Minkus to Commissioner Matanki in which he very openly says that he was originally selected to chair this commission, not by Mayor Van Duzen, but by Corporation Counsel Lorge. And in his own words, Chairman Matanki has said that Corporation Counsel Lorge not only selected him, but also assured him that chairing this commission would not require anything of him whatsoever. In the past two and a half years, every ethics complaint that Minkus has reviewed has concerned our village legal department. Chairman Minkus has never recused himself from an ethics review concerning our Corporation Counsel, despite his conflicts of interest and despite being repeatedly asked to recuse himself at commission meetings by Skokie residents. I've seen this firsthand because I'm the only member of the board who has ever attended and observed our Ethics Commissioners in action. I have watched repeatedly as residents have asked Chairman Minkus to recuse himself from votes in which he has a conflict of interest, and he has refused. If we are all aware of this, why is, I'll, I'll ask the same question again, kind of why is Chairman Minkus being nominated for reappointment?
Because he, because he does not have a conflict of interest. If I thought he had a conflict of interest, then I would ask him to step aside. But I have taken the time, he does not have a conflict of interest. He is my appointment, and as is Rabbi Matanki. Let me make that very clear to everybody. So if you have an objection, it is with me. And in both cases, it was my idea to appoint them. I have nothing but the highest regard for the rabbi and for the work that Minkus has done over a lifetime. And I think you're being very unfair to him. And I would ask for a motion.
Fair.
I got, I got something. I, I'd be quiet, so. I have been involved with nine commissions. Nah, actually seven. Four is a liaison and three is an active member. And they all have the same thing in common. A bunch of people get together, they exchange ideas, they learn from each other. And every example I have seen has worked. The only person who has never been able to exchange ideas and learn from each other is you, sir. You have never had discussions with any of us?
I call point of order.
Ah, shut up. Sorry, I lost that.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No, let's, let's stop here. Let's stop.
So I-
Ralph.
No, no, I'm sorry, George. It's, I, this is his modus operandi.
Point of order.
Ralph.
No, when he doesn't agree, he goes after people when he doesn't get his way. And then he, he impugns the honor of two people who are-
Point of order.
Who are impeachable.
Man, point of order.
They are of the highest character, the highest ethics.
Well, he's talking, he's talking.
And I just, I just can't see it. And I'm wondering if, if you should be censored, sir. Listen to the words you call people.
Just stop. Stop. Stop it. I am. Okay?
I apologize, Mayor.
Okay, now I'm asking for a motion. Trustee Suckert. To confirm?
To, a motion to confirm.
I'm looking for a second. We have a second. Any further comments or questions?
No.
Call the roll, please.
I have a comment. Now that we have a second and a discussion again.
You've spoken on the subject already.
Well, I have a different comment, and it's regarding ethics overall. Trustee Klein, I really like you, but I've heard the tapes that were released. You've done this all before to James, you all have. Five recordings, all this. Have you ever volunteered before or done anything? I have thousands and thousands of hours. Have you ever hired anybody? I have hundreds of people. So you talking about character and people of, you know, I mean, these attacks, they're consistent. And there's five recordings. Yes, they've been released, but where, we don't know. But I've heard every single one of them. So please, this tirade, like, it's-
Okay.
Very unbecoming. Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Suckert?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Kuhn?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson?
I abstain.
Trustee Pure Slavi?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Van Duzen?
Aye, the motion passes. Next item is report of our village manager, John Lockerbie.
Thank you, Mayor Van Duzen and Village Board. Good evening, everyone. Uh, item A is regarding a COVID update. Uh, Mike Charlie, the Director of Health and Human Services, is with us this evening to provide the update. And as he's approaching the podium, I just wanted to mention, the lighting in the room is a little bit different this evening. The municipal buildings are going through a process where the light bulbs and components of the light fixtures are being enhanced in, in order to be more energy efficient. It's a complimentary program provided by ComEd that businesses and residents can take advantage of. But the lighting looks a little bit different because it's more energy efficient. And this is ComEd's way of increasing the capacity of the grid so that electricity can be allocated to other uses such as energy efficiency and, and car charges and so forth. So with that, Mike, I turn it over to you for a COVID update.
Thanks, John. So, John Lockerbie, our village manager, asked me to come by tonight and provide updates in COVID. As you all know, recently, a new COVID nineteen vaccine was released. And I was gonna talk a little bit about the new COVID nineteen vaccine. And I'm also gonna talk a little bit about COVID data, but I'm gonna keep it pretty brief tonight. So last week on Tuesday, the CDC director approved, or the CDC approved, two new M N R A vaccines, one manufactured by Pfizer and one manufactured by Moderna. And with those two, two new vaccines, the recommendation was that anybody six months and older get vaccinated. And it's something that I also support, and I feel pretty strongly about based on the data that, that's a good recommendation. The updated vaccines, the way the CDC is doing this now is we all get our seasonal flu vaccine. And what they're trying to do now, or at least this is the thought, is that they're trying, they're asking the pharmaceutical companies to create or manufacture a vaccine based upon the strain they think is gonna be most prevalent in the fall. And based upon the vaccine that's been produced, the prevailing thought is that it's gonna be very effective against the current strains of the vaccine, which is really important to preventing severe illness and/or death. It's also shown in studies to protect against long COVID. So I don't know how many of you have friends or family still experiencing symptoms of long COVID, but it is, those, these vaccines are supposed to help with that. The way the CDC releases the information is that the vaccinations continue to outweigh the potential risks. As all of you know, there still are potential risks with any vaccine. But the benefits far outweigh them at this point, so the recommendation is to get the vaccine. I wanna talk a little bit about insurance because I know that's been a big question or a concern as to whether or not everybody's gonna be able to get the vaccine, especially since there's equity issues with people who are underinsured or, or not insured at all. Well, if you have insurance, it's covered. The one thing that I'd recommend is that you do check with the provider because sometimes insurance is that they're out of network, they won't cover it. But in general, if you're going to CVS, Walgreens, other pharmacies like that, they are covered. Medicare and Medicaid, you'll, you'll have access to free COVID vaccines. And then people ask about the uninsured. Well, the CDC has created, and the, the federal government has something called the Bridge Program. And the Bridge Program essentially is for those people who are uninsured and underinsured. And any, most federally qualified health centers, if you're a patient at that facility, you can still get free vaccine. In addition, some major pharmacies such as Walgreens and CVS that are now participating in the Bridge Program. And in a future slide, I'm gonna show people how they can go to vaccines.gov and find if, if you're uninsured or underinsured, a vaccine provider. So we, as a village, the village of Skokie, I might be skipping ahead. We, we offer what's called the Vaccines for Children programs. It's down in the lower level of our Village Hallie clinic. And we'll continue to offer vaccine through that program for those families that are eligible for Medicaid or uninsured or underinsured for children under the age of, I think it's eighteen and under. Then we also run something called the Adult Three Seventeen Program for those adults who are uninsured or underinsured who can come here for free. The one thing we, we will not be doing, at least as of now, is be having these larger bulk vaccine clinics for a couple of reasons. One reason is because it's so accessible everywhere else. A second reason is just staffing. Those large clinics require a ton of staff. And the third reason is just, it's hard for us as a health department to build private insurance to get any reimbursement with the vaccine costing us a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty bucks a sample. It's, it's just a lot of money. So what I'm recommending people do is go to vaccines.gov. Or they can also search the Vaccine for Children program, they can go like to find the public health providers. And that's your best bet in, in regards to finding a vaccine clinic. I just wanna show everyone how easy it is at vaccines.gov. If you, like, I entered a five-digit zip code, I, I checked Moderna and Pfizer twelve plus, eighteen plus, and I just hit search COVID nineteen vaccine clinics. Now, I did this a week ago, and nothing showed up because, well, this just gets a little bit deep into the weeds. None of the providers had the vaccine yet, right? And we were told to discard all the old vaccines because we're gonna be using the new vaccine now. But this is what shows up. So you can see how many providers are currently offering the COVID vaccine in the area. So it's, it's fairly accessible to most areas of the village, including, you know, in the surrounding suburbs and areas. And if you look closely as you, as you, as you look at some of the providers, you can see where it says Bridge Access Program. So anybody who's underinsured or uninsured can look at that and feel safe that if they go to the CVS at four thousand one Main Skokie Boulevard, that they'll be able to get the vaccine. This is the VSC providers. This is, if you're, the Vaccines for Children program, which we have here in the lower level of Village Hallie, Health and Human Services. People can go, enter, enter an address or a zip code. And this is just an example, and I put in six zero zero seven seven, that's Skokie Health and Human Services Department, does pop up for people to find the provider. So I'm gonna transition in the data. So we, we have seen a slight uptick in COVID vaccine cases or hospitalization rates recently. So, you know, that's a little bit alarming. But our COVID levels and our risk level, according to the Centers for Disease Control, is still low, which is somewhat reassuring. You can actually look at the CDC website and see what the COVID nineteen risk level is by county. So when I looked at Cook County, Cook County just a second ago on my phone, we were at four point seven new cases per hundred thousand population, which is well below ten. So if you look at the map of the, of the United States, most areas are still low. We have seen a couple of counties in Illinois, just within the last, like, two weeks, are at medium now, and they're mostly in the southern end of the state. So most of the northern end were still at a low level. Now, you might ask, well, what does low, medium, high mean? Well, if you're at a low level of risk, then they recommend things like, uh, stay up to date with vaccinations. If you're immunocompromised, don't go to parties, don't go to big events. So just use common sense. As you go up to medium and high, it gets a little more risk averse. So certainly, if it's high, then things change. Or even someone who's otherwise healthy, you might wanna reconsider your plans if you're going to a bigger event and things like that. So the second, so the first piece of data that we're looking at is hospitalizations. That's how the CDC is measuring risk. Because hospitalizations, they show it have a really good correlation with the risk level. They don't, data on the number of cases just isn't as accessible as it used to be. I think most can, most of us can agree that we're gonna test via an antigen at home test, and that isn't recorded anymore. So let's talk about wastewater data because it's interesting. And it's something else we can look at. So currently, there's seventy-nine different wastewater, wastewater plants where they're testing the water. And what's interesting about this is when you see the level start to go up in the wastewater, usually is about two weeks prior than you actually see the hospital rates going up. So it sort of provides you a good indication of where we're headed. And it also provides you sort of a snapshot of a geographic area. For instance, the O'Brien Water Reclamation Plant, which receives wastewater from Skokie and, and the surrounding area. This is sort of the geographic area that receives waste to the wastewater treatment plant. You can kind of see on the far right, I know it might be hard to see, but we've, we've seen that uptick in cases. So we'll have to keep an eye on it. But most importantly with hospitalizations, we're still low. And I think until there's a burden on the hospital system, I don't really think that they'll be asking people to, to, to do much other than mask and stay, stay vaccinated. That's my presentation for tonight. I hope I didn't go over my time. If there's any questions, I'm happy to-
I have any questions?
With, with, with the new vaccine, is it, is it going to be an annual vaccine? Or the previous ones were good for like six months, if I remember correctly?
So, so, okay, so I think I can answer that part. So are you asking if you're gonna have to have more than like one vaccine?
Yes.
So if you've already, so there's all sorts of rules with this. Like if you're, if you're, if you're younger, if you're under the age or around, like, under the age of six months or, or just above six months, between a certain age, then you've gotta have like two doses of Moderna or three doses of Pfizer. But if you're, if you're our age, then regardless of if you had the vaccine or not, it's a one-dose series. And then prevailing thought, although they really haven't said this, is that they're gonna try to, I think they're gonna start rolling it out more like the flu. Where once a year, you'll be able to go get your flu dose and your COVID dose. You can't get them at the same time. There's no risk to that.
Trustee Suckert?
That's what I was gonna ask, 'cause this is the time where people are going for their flu shots. And so you're saying it's okay to just get a flu shot and a COVID shot within the same timeframe? Okay, thank you.
Trustee Pure Slavi?
Thank you. First of all, thank you, village manager Lockerbie, for recommending that we have this report this evening. I think it's very important because people are starting to worry about COVID again. It was an excellent report and very detailed. Thank you. My question is, it's, it's extraordinary that there's Vaccines for Children and Adult Three One Seven programs. I'm concerned that people don't read our Skokie emails. And I wanna know what we're doing to ensure that people know that these are available for those who are underinsured or not insured. Those are the, the, the population that we should worry about the most. How do they know this is available? And are we doing it also in other languages, especially for Spanish-speaking residents?
What, what we will do is we'll make sure that for sure that it goes out via Skokie, uh, Skokie News next Tuesday because we didn't get the vaccine till today. We did push something out in, in news today about it also, but we'll even put more detailed information. What we do know about our website is, as long as it's, it's within the, and Meredith is here, she's waiting ahead. As long as it's like within our website, people can use Google Translate. And I think that's really important. Like, what we've learned is if, instead of using PDFs to promote things, we try to embed it in the website so that people can actually use Google Translate and it will translate to many tons of different languages. Actually, to doing that side, I think I'm right. But yeah, I know that-
If I may suggest, I think that we have to look at other ways to try to reach residents as well. I don't think that we go to, enough people go to the website. I feel that if you are someone who's not insured, you probably don't feel that you have the right to get it, et cetera. There's gotta be, I don't have an answer. I think there's a problem about how we reach more people to know that this is available for free because we wanna keep you safe and healthy. I, I'm sorry that I don't have it. Maybe we could speak to the Communications Department, we can look at other avenues. I don't think, unfortunately, the newsletter and the website are the only answers. And maybe it's posting in the Skokie grocery stores where people go, "Did you know?" I don't know. You know, the old-fashioned flyers might be somewhat as effective as trying to use the technology because not everybody's necessarily in certain areas on technology.
No, we appreciate the comments and we'll give it some additional consideration. We do have a list of community bulletin boards that we post information on, and so we'll make sure that this information is being posted there. We, we appreciate the suggestions and we'll give it more thought.
Thank you.
Trustee Klein.
Do you have one quick question? Do you have any thought on, if you have had one manufacturer's, it, uh, serum, should you stay or is it, can you mix and match?
You can, you can mix and match. I don't, I've been reading up on this actually, and there's, I don't think there's enough data to say that, that, that. So this is a complex question, so, so I've read up on this, and you can mix and match. There's been certain data suggests that if you, if you go from like Pfizer, Moderna, it actually helps. But what I've also read is there's not sufficient data to say that it's that, like, it's gonna improve your, improve your protection anymore by doing so. So you can mix and match. I think that's the most important thing, and it will provide you a good level of protection.
Thank you.
Can I make one more comment? I apologize. Something occurred to me real quick.
Okay.
QR codes on the co- on the posters or signs. Most people have a smartphone that can link to a QR code, and it might get, drive people to the website to do it, to look for the information.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Sutker.
I forgot to ask about, um, like nursing homes and the elder, elderly homes. Cause I, I just wanna make sure we, we learned from the last wave. And so what, what is the approach for that, for the new vaccines?
Well, so the Illinois Department of Public Health, since the start of the pandemic, has done a really, really good job of working directly with our long-term care facilities. So our long-term care facilities in the state have existing relationships with, um, providers to provide in-house vaccination at those residents.
And that's gonna continue with the new vaccine, or you don't know?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, but because I don't know, I'm fairly confident that, because they were pushing out a ton of information early on about us working with the, with the long-term care facilities on that. But they've, they've really created some, um, strong protocols and logistics for, uh, administration of vaccines at long-term care facilities. So I'm fairly confident that there's something already, um, existing with the state.
Thank you.
Trustee Kuhn.
Yeah, I just had a follow-up, um, to Trustee Pierce Lowen's comment, um, in particular regarding the Bridge Access Program. And, um, wanting to make sure that we're, um, targeting those that, um, or making sure that those get the message who are, um, uninsured or, um, underinsured. Um, and then are there any additional requirements or like what type of, what would they need to present, um, to get access to that program?
Maybe we just have to come and show that they're doing, they just have to follow up on education. It's fairly easy to get out of the education process.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Being done?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
See you in just a minute.
Thank you.
Uh, in fact, if you wanted to just, Mike, if you wanted to just remain there. Uh, the next item on the agenda is Report of our Corporation Council.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, the report, uh, of the Corporation Council is listed on under, uh, item eleven. Was part of the consent agenda this evening, and as such, was approved at that time, and that would complete my report.
Next item is Unfinished Business, Mike Charlie, and the Twenty Twenty-three Skokie Community Health Plan.
Thank you for having us back again. Um, this is, Liz Nelson, uh, is also here, uh, just in case you guys have any questions. But on Tuesday, September fifth, so Liz presented information on our, uh, Health and Human Services Community Health Improvement Plan Report. And, uh, tonight, we are asking the Village Board, uh, to provide their approval of the plan that was submitted as part of the agenda packet tonight. So that, uh, we can then submit the I-Plan Report of Further Requirements of Our State Certification to the Illinois Department of Public Health for State Approval Plan, what we want to do. Thank you.
Uh, a motion to accept the Twenty Twenty-three Skokie Community Health Plan, five-year strategy, would be in order. Trustee Robinson, seconded by Trustee Kuhn. Are there any comments or questions, Trustee Robinson?
Yes, thank you. And thank you both for, uh, coming back, uh, to share, uh, with us. Uh, what I was hoping that you can do, I know we had recommended some changes, uh, to the initial, uh, plan. If you could just review those changes that were made between last, uh, presentation and now.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the most important thing is we submitted the right copy.
Yep.
This time around. And, I mean, we made some subtle changes to the Affordable Housing section, um, by removing the one section that didn't belong. And by including, um, the section on the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Um, but other than that, um, we didn't make any significant changes. If there's anything in particular that you'd recommended that I, we may have forgotten about or may have missed, I think that I, that's what we addressed.
It was, it was targeted with the Affordable Housing recommendations.
Yes, that's the one section.
Yeah.
Right, right. There was, there was, uh, a reference to a different program that is, that was deleted that wasn't intended to be in the program, in the document.
Right.
And then because of the board's discussion the same night at the last board meeting about the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, we wanted to be sure that any timelines within the work plan reflected the, um, that discussion. And so it was minor refinements to timelines of the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, but it was, um, basically deleting the reference to the one program.
I just want to say thanks again. I thought your presentation at the last meeting was fantastic. Um, and, um, sorry, I'm just totally blanking right now. It was great. Oh, I wanna say, uh, thank you so much for focusing in your presentation on the Affordable Housing components of the plan, which are so relevant for our ongoing Inclusionary Housing conversations. So, um, I thought that was excellent. Thank you.
Trustee Pierce Lowen.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was not here let, two weeks ago. I'm quite aware of it. I was on a business trip. But I do know, of course, that there was unintended part that was presented before the, uh, village. But I will say that, and I appreciate that it's been updated. I did look at that very quickly. But we received this on Thursday, and unfortunately, it was, for those of us who observe it, right before a holiday where we could not, I could not read it over Saturday and Sunday and had no time. So I have to tell you, Mayor, when we go to take the vote, I do not feel that I could personally vote on the Skokie Community Health Plan without more time to really carefully review the strategy outlined in the report. Um, the first report we know had some, inadvertently had some recommendations that were withdrawn. Um, so at this point, I personally have not reviewed the entire report to do it justice. For me, as a trustee who should know what I'm voting on to vote on it tonight. So I would personally ask if we can delay it again so that we have more time to spend with it. It's a large report. It's not a five-page report.
Yeah, we need, but we do need to get it in. Did, we got an extension.
What's the extension? I'm not trying to delay you, but I can't in good faith vote for something I don't understand.
Um, we have until March third, March twenty-first or something, twenty twenty-four. We got a six-month extension. They only give six-month extensions.
Oh. Oh.
It's standard. We didn't request six months. It's just the standard six months.
So especially then, Mayor, personally, I know I need to really review it before I feel comfortable.
Okay. Does that cause you any problem? Or just put it on, what we can do is put it on the consent agenda for next meeting.
I just have a follow-up question.
Excuse me?
I, I just have a quick fo- follow-up question. Um, I understand that this, um, report has been delayed, um, already. And I wanna understand a little bit more about the timeline in terms of when the I-Plan Committee convenes together, um, in anticipation of the, the next five-year cycle. Um, is there a particular alignment in terms of when the committee begins to evaluate the next plan so that we can ensure that we're on track the next time around?
Yeah, so you were delayed this, this last time around primarily because of COVID. It's just our resources were taxed. But usually you wanna start about two years out. So it's very odd that it's a five-year plan, but you're starting a plan, sort of like a budget or campaigning for, for the president. You start so early, but that's part of the process. It's a, it's a very comprehensive process for about two years prior.
Okay. Yeah, that's something I'm just mindful of, as we try and get ourselves aligned back into the next cycle.
Yeah.
So if we held it for one more meeting, that will not jeopardize it?
No.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm sup.
Okay, so, uh, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is our Plan Commission. This evening, the Vice Chair, Jeff Furman, with Johanna Knighton. Uh, there were four Plan Commission cases.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. The commis-, our Chairman Luke was detained tonight, so I will try to pitch it for him as best I can. So, um, case twenty twenty-three dash thirteen P, which I believe is the first one. And it's August third, twenty twenty-three, meeting the Plan Commission heard the request of forty-one fifty-nine Main Street on behalf of Hamburg, Hamburg Health Alliance for special use permit for services to the elderly and disabled, except primarily office uses in the B-one service commercial district. The petitioner intends to open a federally funded adult daycare service at forty-one fifty-nine Main Street. Through the Illinois Department of Aging, the facility will serve between fifteen and twenty clients per day and have a total of seven staff members. All clients will be transported to and from the facility via bus shuttle system operated by Hamburg Health Alliance. One van and bus on-site will drop clients in the rear of the building via the alley. The anticipated hours of operation are between nine and five, Monday through Friday. Um, the Plan Commission concurred with staff's recommendation to grant the special use permit conditions. And the Plan Commission recommendation by a vote of seven ayes and zero nays with two members absent. Any questions?
A motion to, uh, accept the recommendation on the Twenty Twenty-three dash thirteen P special use permit for forty-one fifty-nine Main Street is in order. Pierce Lowen, seconded by Johnson. Uh, any comments or questions?
Is this, is this the first, uh, facility like this in the village? Do we know?
I don't know if we have any other offhand. I don't, I don't.
They were, you should be going by the, in the Gaelt Center, right next door?
That's not an adult daycare.
Mm-hmm.
That's not a daycare, senior daycare.
Well, they have drop-in. They call it drop-in.
Yeah.
No, I don't think it, but I don't think it stands.
No, that's one of those, but I don't think it is.
And I don't think it has a permit from, uh, my.
Well, it's a welcome addition to the village.
Yeah.
It is. I didn't mean to st- story. That's a good question.
No, I think it, it is, it's a, technically, it's a drop-in center. I don't think it's a formal license, um, adult daycare.
It's not standing the same level.
Thank you.
Uh, call the roll, please.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Kuhn.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Lowen.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Wendus.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. The next case is twenty twenty-three dash fourteen P special use permit. And it's August third, twenty twenty-three, meeting the Plan Commission heard the request of Ruben Skokie LLC on behalf of Mia Rugani for a special use permit for outdoor dining at the existing Bon Chan Chicken Limited Service Restaurant at fifty-two thirty-seven Tui Avenue. In a B-two commercial district, the outdoor dining area will be located on an existing pad that is located on the west side of the building and will contain four tables, seating for four persons each. The petitioner also intends to install ex- exterior LED lighting along the west wall of the building so the patio can be utilized by customers in the evening, a trash container. Of course, we have trash containers in there, of course. Um, we'll be providing within the outdoor dining area for special use custom, for, uh, for customer use, I'm sorry. The Plan Commission concurred with staff's recommendation to grant special use permit, subject to conditions. And it was the Plan Commission recommendation we voted with seven ayes, zero nays, and two members absent.
A motion on Plan Commission Case Twenty Twenty-three dash fourteen P, a special use permit for fifty-two thirty-seven Tui Avenue. Bon Chan Chicken is in order. Trustee Robinson, seconded by Trustee Sutker. Are there any comments or questions? Being done, uh, call the roll, please.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Kuhn.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Lowen.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Wendus.
Aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. On tw- um, next case is twenty twenty-three dash eighteen P, uh, chapter amendment. Plan Commission analysis at its August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, and continued from the August eighth meeting. The Plan Commission reviewed an amendment to zoning Article eleven, Section one eighteen, to two, um, to two twelve subsection C six, off-street parking and loading facilities to prohibit new curb cuts and front yard driveways on lots that abut or have access to a public improved alley. The four main reasons discussed for proposing this ordinance change, storm run reduction into the combined sewer system, pedestrian-friendly environment, loss of green space and front yard arque way trees, loss of on-street parking. During the discussion about this case, the commissioners focused on clarifying when these changes would apply and ensuring that it was only for new applications of driveways that have access to a public alley. Commissioners also discussed the current condition of alleys and how snow can make them difficult to navigate at times. Staff recommended that public works, department affirms that public alleys in the village are drivable and that they have a procedure to repair and re- and degrade as needed. The Plan Commission concurred with the staff's recommendation to amend Section one one eight, zoning Article eleven, off-street parking and loading facilities prohibit new curb cuts and front yard driveways on lots that abut or have access to a public improved alley with the addition of a word new. And the Plan Commission recommended by a vote of seven ayes, zero nays, and two members absent to affirm.
A motion on Plan Commission Case Twenty Twenty-three dash eighteen P, zoning chapter amendment regarding driveways would be in order. Trustee Johnson, seconded by Trustee Kuhn. Are there any comments or questions? Being done, call the roll, please.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Kuhn.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Lowen.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Wendus.
Aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. The final case is twenty twenty-three dash nineteen P. And it's August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting. The Plan Commission reviewed an amendment to Section one eighteen of the Skokie Village Code to modify provisions of the, of drive-through facilities. Staff recommended and the commission discussed, uh, changes to Chapter one eighteen. This is mo- support of more sustainable Skokie and managed impacts of drive-throughs. Number one, adopt specific language that defines a drive-through facility. Two, require drive-throughs to be screened from the street and should be placed behind buildings. Three, remove food-related drive-throughs as an allowed use from the mixed-use districts N-X, T-X, and C-X to reduce the negative cumulative impact of restaurant drive-throughs in pedestrian-oriented areas. Reduce the parking requirements in drive-through establishments from one parking space for each one hundred square feet of net floor area to one first, one hundred square, one hundred and fifty square feet of net floor area. And requirement that no mature, healthy trees can be removed to accommodate the drive-through as reviewed by the village arborist. And for every one hundred trips generated by a drive-through, one new tree must be planted on-site or a fee in lieu shall be paid to the village to offset emissions from the drive-through activity. In addition to these code changes, several policy changes were discussed to be implemented and do not require code changes. Uh, a motion was made and the Plan Commission recommended by a vote of seven ayes, zero nays, and two members absent to approve the request.
If, if, if I understand this correctly, part of the recommendation is to require that drive-through- If, if, if I understand this correctly, part of the recommendation is to require that drive-through restaurants offer composting. Is that correct?
It is. I could read those other requirements if you'd like, Mr. Man.
No, I mean that, well, if you, it might be helpful, uh, cause I think a couple of them.
Okay. And I'm sure these code changes, several policy changes were discussed to be implemented. The quarter plan on record in the village addresses how operations are managed to reduce queuing at the line in order to better understand how the restaurant will operationally handle a long line of cars, prohibit deliveries during peak usage times, and require that ma- mobile ordering be part of the business model of approved special uses if customers can order ahead of time through mobile apps on phones or computers. This will reduce or ordering times between, this, the ordering times between the order window and the pay window at businesses. It might also discourage customers from moving through a drive-through lane and getting out of the vehicle and going into the establishment. Require drive-through restaurants to offer composting and recycling in addition to waste that will go to the landfill for both kitchen waste as well as dining area waste.
Thank you. Uh, motion on Plan Commission Case twenty twenty-three dash nineteen P, zoning chapter amendment, drive-through. Trusty Johnson, seconded by Trusty Sutker. Comments, questions? Trusty Klein.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
Um, first thing, on number two, require your drive-throughs to be screened from the street and should be placed behind buildings. Is it possible to add, if possible? Because we don't know certain, we can't say a, a drive-through has to be behind the building if it's not possible. We have, we have to give some leeway to whatever the lot size is.
Well, the, the, if possible, language wasn't discussed with the commissioners. I'm gonna ask that, but it was fine.
The idea was to move, move away from the language of screened from the public way and to provide a little bit more specific geography as to where the, where it should be. So, um, so the idea of screened from the street and placed behind the buildings, trying to give a little more locations. Somebody can put it at the front, but then put a bunch of arboride in front of it between the sidewalk and the drive-through and call it for screening. The idea is to get it off the pedestrian environment and behind the building. That was the intent of the discussion.
So is, under this proposal, is it possible to put on the side of the building?
I guess it depends on where the front of the building is. So if the front is kind of on the other side, or, you know, I, I, my, my home has a side entrance.
That's, that's, that's my point.
It's my, as my front door. So, you know, it's, it, there's, there's some nuance there. Um, but also the idea really is to, to put a drive-through where it's appropriate. And that is where it could accommodate the drive-through behind the building. You look at the Starbucks at the site we just talked about, the drive-through is, is behind, at, at the Jack's Corner site. It's behind the building. It, it doesn't feel like it's in the front. It doesn't, it doesn't overwhelm a strip center on a busy street. So the idea of getting, trying to get things behind was the goal here, to move it off the pedestrian front door.
Oh, yeah. When you say move the dri- is it just the driveway or the window where the people get their food?
It's the, it's, so it's the order area and then the pickup area. So if the pickup area, it really is the, the, the idling, when we've looked at the, some of the, the research on this, the idling is where you're queuing up before you get to the menu board. When they talk about the menu board to the end of the line, that's the queuing. And then it's from the menu board to the, the pickup pay area, that's where you move a little faster.
I, I see your point there. I, I have another question, so let me go with that. Um, item three, related food drive-throughs, there's an allowed use for mixed use. Are you saying to do away in these areas, the NX, TX, and CX? Totally do away with drive-throughs?
Do away with food-related drive-throughs, because those are the ones that, and, uh, so if a bank, if a bank wanted to, to come through, although increasingly banks have moved away from drive-throughs, they're, they're doing, more people are doing the banking online. They don't need to come in and not get cash through an ATM the same way. But the idea is that we're moving away from food-related drive-throughs. They, they would not be allowed in NX, TX, or CX.
I know, I read an interesting thing last week that McDonald's new model is no dine-in, strictly drive-throughs. So I'm sure you, you've heard this.
Well, in, increasingly restaurants, I mean, COVID shuffled the deck completely on how people want to get their food. They just want to get in, get out. Um, but there's, there's some evidence that people might not mind just walking in and getting it, but, but they drive up and go in. You, people use the Starbucks app. They can order it from five blocks away. They can drive up and they can go get it. Why stand in the line to s- to drive through and, and wait your turn to order it? It almost feels a little archaic when we have these devices that we can control the or- and, and there's some discussion that maybe even the menu order board might be gone. It's just a pick, it becomes a pickup window. We've had some restaurants, um, even ask if, if, if they could just have a pickup window off their alley because they have customers who order online or via phone, and they, they don't necessarily want an, a menu board or a window, but they want a, a window so you can just pick up your order. And so I think there's some pivots that all these restaurants are testing out. I think Taco Bell has, has, has sort of a super drive-through model that they've tested in Texas. McDonald's is doing this. Um, there's, there's quite a few ways that they're, that they're taking the food, the food order restaurant options.
I just don't want it to be anti-business is where I'm go- where I'm going in.
Yeah, and I go, the idea for the CX, TX, and NX was, was to be supportive of the businesses that want to be in a more pedestrian-oriented environment. And so there's people who want to be able to walk between the shops. We have sometimes had a challenge with encouraging businesses in some of those areas to come because they see curb cuts. They don't, they don't see the outdoor dining area as a possibility. So they're looking, they're looking, we're trying to build those areas as more pedestrian-oriented for those, those businesses and then encourage where there's more high traffic, more automobile-oriented uses, encourage those uses to those areas. The, and, and frankly, the, the traffic counts and the, the vehicular movements are going to be on our track. Those places are in those, the TX, CX, and NX.
I see your point. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have a motion?
I think so.
I'm going to, to, oh, I'm checking, just wanted to check in. Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can we have a second? Okay. Lauren.
I feel like I kind of asked, is this on? I feel like I kind of asked this question when the Plan Commission was discussing it and got sort of like off-the-record answer. But, um, I would like for the record what they mean by a, a one tree for every hundred vehicle visits. Is it like per day? Is it total in a year? Uh, I think that specific number needs to be explicitly loaded on.
So it's, it's the average daily traffic generated fr- by the use. So if there are four hundred cars generated on a day for a drive-through use, it would be four trees.
So, um, what I'm not really understanding here as it relates to this amendment for the drive-through facilities is, are we absolutely trying to crush businesses here in Stoki? I mean, Johanna, you mentioned your house has an entrance on the side. That's because you probably have a split-level permit, the way it's designed. There's no fast food restaurants that have their front door on the side of a property. They have their front door on the front of a property. So if you're gonna limit this and you're gonna approve this change, you're basically telling fast food restaurants or restaurants that want to have a drive-through to have it in the back of the property, which may not be feasible as to Trusty Klein's point. So are we trying to limit what businesses are going to be involved here? I don't understand. So that would be my only ask, is that you guys consider that point before moving forward with it. I didn't get up in time in terms of, um, mentioning the driveways. One thing to consider, and I would ask, ha- have we reached out to those that would be affected as it relates to the property value? So if you have a home on an alley and you don't currently have a curb cut, the way I understand this is right, you are no longer going to be allowed to create a driveway for your property. Have we reached out to the residents, the homeowners, to see if they would like to financially be affected by not being able to have a driveway going forward by this plan change? Has that been addressed at all?
Okay, good. I have your name.
Jason Amr.
Okay.
Have we, have we sent anything out to the residents? Asking them if they would be, if they, if they would like to be affected in this way?
I'm not aware that we have. This is a question that came before the Plan Commission in.
But, but we are voting to enact this, and I would think that we'd want to ask the residents who would be affected by this change. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get clarification on the tree planting thing? Since I've taken up your time, might as well go all the way. So.
What's clarification?
Okay. Every hundred trips, you're saying every hundred customers, they have to plant a tree?
Every hundred cars that are generated, yeah. There could be two customers per car.
Cars. Okay, now.
He's keeping the debt. He's keeping the debt.
What? Yeah, but what, what is the cost of planting a tree? I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna charge somebody something. Shouldn't we ask what it's gonna cost?
So I, well, I, my understanding is the village has a fee that we, that if, if, for the tree replacement, and I don't have that number off the top of my head.
But we're not replacing. You, this is in addition for every hundred.
It's the co- it's the village's cost to plant another tree. So the idea of the.
Yeah, but it's a drive-through tax. John, you got a number?
It, it's about three hundred and fifty dollars per tree.
So every hundred, so what is that? Three dollars and fifty cents a car?
So the, the concept is that, um, trees are good for, for the environment, and so they do some good things, and so.
Nobody, nobody, nobody's arguing that.
So there was a, so there was a lot of debate on what is the right number of trees? And the trees need to be close to the drive-through in the ideal situation. And so as the Plan Commission and staff deliberated, uh, the thought was the hundred cars average per day equates to one tree. Um, is how that ratio was developed. Um, but the three hundred.
Is my math right? That's three dollars and fifty cents a car?
Right. It, the, it wasn't necessarily a, a cost equation as much as a, an environmental.
No, I understand that, you know, why you did it. I just don't know if it's, uh, if it's proper and if it's anti-business.
Well, it's three dollars and fifty cents, but that's not every time hundred cars goes through. It's the average that, uh, the average daily. So it's not like, okay, a hundred cars came through and now we're gonna charge another three dollars and fifty cents for everybody. To put in a tree, that, that's not how it.
So the one, what I'm, I'm missing that. For ev- so every hundred trips is a tree, correct?
So.
No, they're talking about, and if I understand correctly, a hundred, correct me if I, if I misunderstood. It's the average daily rate. Am I right?
Right. So when we receive, uh, application for a specialty, for a drive, for, for a restaurant like this, they're gonna tell us that on, on a weekday, they're gonna produce, I'm just picking a number, four hundred cars per day. So our recommendation in the conditions would be that for those four hundred cars, that they be required to either plant four trees on-site or provide money to plant offsite. So the, the, the Dunkin' Donuts case at Dunster and Lockwood didn't have additional space on-site to plant. So they're g- they're going to pay the fee in lieu to the village so the village can hopefully plant some of those additional, I think it's three trees, and another location nearby. This has also been helpful at a s- a case that's gonna come before you at a later date, that, uh, there are three mature trees. The first plan was to take the trees all down. But when we started talking about this, they said, oh, well, we'll find a way to preserve the three trees. So the three ma- mature trees are always better than brand-new trees. So this, this has helped preserve the trees going forward versus adding to the cost for them.
So let, let me break it down to.
May, may I say something? It's an opportunity for every hundred cars that go through there. It's the estimate when they go from the, to the permit or file the, the plan that it's estimated and it's calculated at one time.
If they only pay it once?
Right.
Okay, that's, that I didn't understand.
So it's, it may be for the first hundred cars, it might be three dollars and fifty cents. But over the next thousand cars for the next five years, it becomes a miniscule amount because there's no, there's, it's paid. It's done.
Okay, so after the hundred cars, they don't pay again?
It's only based on estimate.
You said miniscule. I don't know what that number is.
It's only based on the estimate that they get when they file the plan with the plan.
So they pay it once?
Yes. When they build the building, they're responsible for any trees, but then they own the building, the property for, hopefully in perpetuity.
All right, so we're gonna say plant a tree?
Yes.
Like Israel.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it.
That's, that's confused a lot of people, so.
I wanted to say one more thing about the tree offset. Um, just according to my calculations that I presented to the Plan Commission a few months ago, um, in order to offset every four minutes of idling, we need one tree. This is like over the course of a year. So a lot of these drive-throughs really, if they wanted to be carbon, at least not have their extra greenhouse gases detracting from the progress we're making toward our sustainability plan, they'd be planting a couple thousand trees. And they're, we're only asking them to plant like four or five trees, unfortunately.
Are there any comments or questions? Trusty Coon.
Um, what's the fee in lieu amount?
The, yeah, the, the tree fee is, um, is three hundred and fifty dollars currently.
Okay. Um, and then with regards to the, um, removing of the fi- uh, sorry. The design, um, so that was number two, the requiring the drive-throughs to be screened from the street, um, and placed behind buildings. What are examples of existing drive-throughs that would not be consistent with this?
Can you repeat the question?
I'm just trying to understand for number two, um, like some examples of existing drive-throughs that would not be compliant, um, with that recommendation?
I think, I'm not certain. Most of them, like the new Dunkin' Donuts, I know, on Two, where it is, Starbucks, on Two, where it is, um.
Perhaps overwise?
Overwise, yeah. And the, kind of the, the, the McDonald's on Two Rose Point Road is a lot, some of it is and some of it isn't. Kind of behind the way it sits on the lot.
And the McDonald's on Dunster.
I'm sorry?
The McDonald's on Dunster.
McDonald's on Dunster queues up, yeah, the ordering is on the east side of the building and then the bulk of it goes behind the building.
Right.
Yeah.
But they queue up on the east side, yeah.
The shape of the line, what these, so, so, but there, some of them are kind of hybrids between, but there's some. I think one of the ones that's, the Starbucks is a great example of having it behind. It's, um, even the queue is between two sections of the shopping center, so you never even see people queuing up for it.
The one that's, that's kind of a, a mix is, uh, Portillo's, where the front is facing the parking lot. And so technically, the back is the street, but that's where the sidewalk is. So, you know, there are, there are gonna be situations where staff is gonna have to, um, look at, uh, solution that's consistent with the intent. And I, I think what we can mention is that obviously this will come back to the board in the form of a ordinance. And, uh, corp counsel, working with, with Johanna staff, staff will make sure that, uh, the question about the trees and so forth is clarified as much as possible. So, um, I'd encourage you all to read that ordinance when it comes to make sure, because I can see clearly why, um, one might read the case as, uh, as Trusty, uh, uh, Klein did.
Yeah, and then I guess, um.
Trusty Pure Slowen.
No, 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 she's still speaking, sorry.
So I just real quick follow up, um, that's just a follow-up to where that also just under, I wanted to understand that in addition to those code changes for those policy change recommendations, what the anticipated timeline would be, um, for implementation?
We usually bring back a second reading within a month, not the first.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Trusty.
Yep.
Trusty Pure Slowen. That's all right. I'm form relating. So, thank you, thank you, trustee. Um, so the Plan Commission analysis and the recommendations are coming to us to be voted upon this evening? Just wanted to clarify because I'm a little confused here. So I have a couple. One is, why is this new requirement for only food-related drive-throughs? And honestly, I, I am uncomfortable. I mean, I, I do believe drive-throughs unfortunately are a very, you made the case. All businesses are moving to drive-throughs. Not everybody wants to sit in a restaurant. I, I, I do believe it would be in our best interest to try to put them behind the building. I, I, I do believe it would be in our best interest to try to put them behind the building, I don't think it should be an ordinance, because I think we're gonna lose businesses who can't figure out a way of doing it, and they wanna put the drive-through on the side, so I, on this particular point, am not comfortable and would vote against your, the recommendations as written, and again, I'd like to know why is this only food-related?
We don't see the queuing for drive-throughs for other y- other types of uses like this, you don't see the ba- and banks just aren't building drive-through telling machines, you, 'cause you bank online, um, even the Chase that we've, that we approved last year, their specific model is to do away with the drive-throughs and only have those for ATMs, but even that, the design was, I think, ultimately the ATMs could come off the building, they're not really part of the, the building the way they, they have been historically, so, um, banks are just moving away from this, so, I, I don't know that there's that many other drive-through uses that generate the queuing traffic that you see in a morning at a s- at a s- um, at a store that's selling coffee or breakfast, um, or fast food at lunchtime, um, certainly fa- fast food and fast casual and drive-through, but even, even Panera is pivoting to you can't order your food there, I think their, their queue is taking too long, but you can only order the food in, in advance and then go through the line to pick up the food, so there's, that's even a change within the past six, seven months since, um.
But you just made the case that they still need the drive-through, so if the property they're looking for.
Certainly, they still, and they absolutely, right, right, they still need the drive-through.
Only can go behind and they can't do it, they're not gonna do it, so a driving business is out of the village, so I'm not comfortable with that.
Johanna, just also for clarification, when we talk about queuing, then we're not including, for instance, queuing for a car wash?
Not a drive-through, considered a drive-through, correct?
Yeah. Just.
Hi, David Lozick, um, I just had a quick question, the, how is drive-through defined as the ordering versus the pickup window? Because like even on Dempster, W O S, while the ordering is on the back or the side, depending on how you wanna say it, it's another turn before you get the other thing, so, how do you define that, and is, is let's say, the W O S on Dempster, uh, with the, what would be the?
Okay, so, um, one other piece of this, uh, text amendment seeks to define drive-throughs, the village currently doesn't have a dr- definition of drive-through, so, um, the, the proposed language that the Plan Commission reviews, a drive-through facility, a facility which accommodates automobiles and from which the occupants of the automobiles may make purchases or transact business, including the stacking spaces in which automobiles wait. Examples include but are not limited to drive-up windows, menu boards, order boards or boxes, drive-up banks, automated teller machines. Drive-through facilities shall not include the direct refueling of motor vehicles, car washes, parking spaces for customer pickup, or loading of goods or products purchased onsite or prior to the customer's arrival, or parking and loading spaces used for the donation of stock container goods. So, um, I'm not sure the Dunk- the question about the Dunkin' Donuts, that, that probably would have to have been, um, oriented slightly different, but they did make best efforts to put things behind the building and, and understanding staff's feedback, um, but, but they also would not be subject to this, if that was also the question, because they, this, this is, that project was.
I have a further question, if this was an ordinance, could somebody, if they couldn't put a drive-through in the back, request a variance? Or is there a reason why, I mean, they could vary.
Can you speak in the microphone, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Is there any reason if this ordinance was voted on, and there was a situation where a business needed a drive-through, there was no place to put it at the back of the building, like has been done in the past, couldn't they request a variance and work with the village, I mean, unless that's an incorrect understanding, I don't see how passing this ordinance would send business away from the village, it would just be the normal way of doing business, and if it wouldn't work, I assume our people would work with them and they would request a variance, like you can put signs on Carvana.
Yeah, I, I, the, the question of a variance is, is, um, very appropriate, but at the same time, it's a preference that when we draft things, we're drafting them, not setting up.
You would apply in most situations, there may be an exception, right, I mean, that's.
Let me, let me just finish my sentence, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Um, when we, when we draft an ordinance, our effort is to attempt to not set up the need for variances, and here it's a very predictable discussion, uh, as to what might occur or not occur in trying to get these cars, which we wanna get out of the way and, and not polluting, uh, to the back of the building, but it's, it doesn't make sense to create something that then is gonna need or, or bring a variance upon a variance, it takes time, it takes staff time, so, uh, we'll, we'll look at it and see if we can clarify language as the ordinance comes back, I think that's, I think we've heard, and, and it's appropriate to raise these issues, but I think the intent of the board is clear that we support, that the board seems to support the idea of trying to get these, uh, queues, uh, out of the way of the side and the front, and maybe we just have to be a little more, um, judicious in how we, how we draft, um, rather than just sticking with something that, you're right, could bring variances, but it's like the old, uh, fence rule we had in the village, uh.
I have my fence two months before it changed.
Okay, so, alright, so tha- that would be my recommendation there unless, uh, and if Johanna concurs. Well, and keep in mind, uh, trustee Klein's proposal about if possible. Right. I think that might help clarify things.
Mayor, I was just gonna add.
Trustee Robinson.
Perhaps language, like an if-then type language, uh, for unique cases. That gives at least a provision for an alternative, uh, recommendation.
Uh, call the wall, please.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Coon?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slovan?
Based on the way it's written, I vote nay.
Trustee Klein?
No.
Mayor Vandusen?
Aye, the motion passes, and it will come back in ordinance form. So on your way home tonight, stop off at a drive-in, although it's, now they're probably just closed, so, you missed it.
You'll be there for it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public comment, anybody wishing to address the board?
Hello, Judy Mendel, uh, two unrelated comments, um, I'd like to commend, uh, Mr. Lockerbie and Meredith, I don't know how to pronounce your last name.
Joia.
Joia, um, on their work on the implementation of electoral reform, the last meeting, uh, was quite good, although I heard there were still some sound problems with people listening online, um, and I'm very happy that they came up with three maps and that you added another meeting, and, um, transparency has been way improved, and, um, I'm just happy with how the, the process is going, and I just wanted to thank you. Um, the other one is, can I put a phone under here for pictures, or no?
For picture shots?
Let's see. Um, I, um, live near the, uh, strip mall at the corner of, uh, Dempster and East Prairie, the northwest corner, it's where Larsa's used to be, and Forza Mitz's, and it is in real disrepair, and I was told to contact Neighborhood Services, and I contacted them, I looked at emails in April and in August, and they're not very responsive, maybe something has happened, although now I understand they have a schedule, and so probably nothing is gonna happen now until the spring, but I just have some pictures to show you the disrepair, uh, of peeling paint, um, uh, you should see the, uh, parkway along Dempster, I didn't take a picture of it, uh, grass overgrown, it's just, it's just awful, and so I don't know, do I go to the Appearance Commission and talk to them? Or, somebody once came there and said, will you please look into it, I, I know, I know I actually CC'd you on one of these emails, but I'll just show you the pictures.
I need to look at the address and what record we have, sometimes we have these properties in, uh, our administrative adjudication process, and so the owners are not as responsive as any of us would like, and so it takes several steps in order to get compliance, and so if you can share with me the address, I'll get back to you about the status and we'll make sure that we're working on the project.
You can't tell in the picture.
I know, I know. I, I know it well, I go to Forza.
Right, and so it's just, um, the pictures, I can't, the pictures aren't looking good, so on like the side of the building, that faces the parking lot, the paint is all peeling, I think it's above Forza, there's just like stuff coming down, um, and it's just, it's just an awful disrepair, and it's, it's a, uh, a boucha scandal, whatever, for that, that area, that's all, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Poca, I was laying on my couch, um, and I wasn't coming tonight, but here I am, uh, so I'm late on this, but I wanna clarify that regarding, um, the conflict of interest with Commissioner Minkus, um, he's a super nice guy, I've communicated with him, I, I did not actually think very highly of him when I didn't know him, which was super easy, 'cause I got to make my own opinions, um, but I even reached out to him asking for, uh, referral for my brother for an attorney, and told him some personal stuff, um, he's a nice guy, but I'm the one who fi- foiled those documents and saw the email that said, um, Michael Lorg asked me to serve three years ago and ass- assured me that this commission appointment would have hired nothing of me, um, you seem like a nice guy too, you look at me, you smile, you have nice eyes, I interrupted you, you didn't yell at me, you should've, I, I'm not mad at you, I'm not mad at Chairman Minkus, but to me, that says there's a conflict of interest, and sometimes we can't help have a conflict of interest, sometimes we think we can look at something unbiased and we don't. If somebody told me that Keith Robinson was killing puppies last night, I don't know him super well, but I know him well enough that I would not believe that that happened, and I can almost guarantee you that if anyone told Ralph Klein that James Johnson was com- killing puppies last night, he would be the first person to believe it, and I'm being a little bit funny there, but when you have a personal relationship with someone, it is hard to look at something with uncolored glasses, and that is all that I'm gonna say on that, but people like me are never gonna feel like these ethics hearings are impartial when you have that conflict there. Um, now something good, I went to put up a flyer about the electoral meetings at Starbucks, 'cause we were doing that dur- during electoral reform, and there was already one there, so I took my flyer home, and like Judy said, I wanna say kudos, I, it is nice to see the more creative ways of reaching the public, um, and the last thing I'm gonna talk about is, I'm like a dog with a bone on, on this one, is that document destruction. Since the vote is under review, and I'm hoping it'll come up for a vote again, I wanna speak really clearly, the minutes for the meetings, even these meetings are unreliable, they do not give you a picture of what has happened in the meeting, they often say things like, I think there was a comment, and the minutes have changed, and these last minutes are probably the best minutes I've seen since I've been reading the minutes, but they were amended. When they were first released, it said Shelley Pat talked about the smoking ban. In relation to what? She wasn't talking about the smoking ban, that has since been corrected, but there are other instances where it says Kimberly Poca has spoken on Carvana. Anybody in this room knows how Kimberly Poca was speaking about Carvana, but seeing that in the minutes doesn't tell a stranger what happened in that meeting or how that meeting went through. So I propose, if this does come back to a vote, that you do what Mr. Johnson asked, and you split it, and you release the minutes, and give us a chance, and yourselves a chance, to see if there's anything in there that you think validates going deeper to find out what really happened in those meetings by listening to the verbatim recordings, because once you destroy those records, they are gone, and when you destroy them before anybody can even see the minutes, it feels like you're hiding something.
Kim, Kimberly.
Jared Rosick again from Optima, I wanna talk about the public, uh, decor of, of public comments, and, uh, I hope I have never done anything wrong. I always emphasize that I take, uh, trustee Johnson's first, uh, complaint very seriously, but I've always said it's allegations that may be true, may be false. Um, I wanna reemphasize, Minkus, I've dealt with him, he's a good guy, very respectful, I have nothing against him, all things being equal, he should be reappointed. Uh, the other that I feel bad about is kind of tonight I caught up, you know, Achilles calling out Hector, calling out the mayor, uh, griping, I guess I could have done that in private, but I, I, I have one debate, you know, usually man-to-man, you deal with someone privately instead of publicly, and, uh, I just kinda feel funny, I hate to approach trustees or someone in private, I mean, I, you know, I see trustee Klein from time to time, we joke around, but I don't wanna be ranting and raving, and at, at the backyard bash, you know, I've made a point to say hello to trustee Robinson and trustee Suckit, but I don't wanna be ranting with them, so sometimes, I think maybe it's kinda bad form to be ranting on TV in public, but maybe that's the best way to do it, and I apologize, you know, I don't really know if it's best to see someone in private or in public, I have a scholarly relationship with the, the mayor, and I don't wanna be talking, I don't wanna be lobbing him in private, I mean, then the life just gets tedious, so I hope I haven't offended anyone, if I have, tell the mayor, he has my address and he could recommend it, he's the, he's my older brother, you know, I mean, I'm the old guy, and he's the really old guy, so he.
Be careful, Jerry, Jerry, be very, very careful, you're moving into dangerous territory. I, it's okay, it's okay, thank you.
We, we have some technical problems at work, so, uh, I, I have to be, my name is Lauren Gronnicki, I have a presentation, which doesn't sound apparently. Tonight, I would like to talk to you about something that was said at the most recent Plan Commission meeting, that was very troubling to me and to some of the other people who were there. Uh, so the background was, they were, this was to skip to, you know, so con- the comments are in context, they were talking about forty-six hundred Maine being sold from a nonprofit school to a for-profit corporation, there's a huge change in land use, permeable surface, um, what are they gonna do with the snow, what are they gonna do about the parking, right, there was like a whole discussion about all of this stuff. The petition or specifically why they came in front of the Plan Commission was because they were asking for a zoning change from R one to R four, and if, uh, Ms. Nyden is here, and she disagrees with any of my telling this over, uh, I hope she will correct that error, and they were asking for a variance for the impermeable surface limit, and it was only by a couple percent, and then there was some building stuff, which I wasn't super clear on, 'cause that's one of my areas, um, here, let's try this one more time. Nope, okay. Alright, um.
It is a bunch of other questions that go to our codes.
That most of the opposition tonight is not to this.
Took some notes, we're thousands.
It is a bunch of other questions that go to our codes, both our comprehensive plan and our zoning code. I took some notes, who the properties are marketed to, privacy, character of the neighborhood, ownership of the property, prior ownership of the property, fee and lieu instead of onsite, affordable housing, value of property, all of those things are interesting, and as a community person, I would be interested in them, but they are not relevant to our discussion and our decision. I think our decision, as I thought earlier in the evening, is controlled by the law, by, um, how we, how this development is presented to us. If it is presented, um, according to code, by the interpretation of our zoning administrator, our legal counsel, our planning director, including the parapet, the width of the units. our legal counsel, our planning director, including the parapet, the width of the units, um, if all of those things meet the definition of the code, the other issues, all of which are interesting, are not relevant to our decision. So therefore, I move acceptance of this project as presented, but for I guess the minor modification of the permeable surface, that's my motion.
Um, I clarified with Commissioner Scott Berman after the meeting and he was basically saying that he felt that the plan commission's hands were tied. If the staff says, we checked over the village code and this project is according to our code, so we say it's according to code and the plan commission says, okay, now we have to approve it and they pass it on to the board and the board says, I, this is the last slide, the board says, well, if the plan commission approved it, then we have to approve it. But at that point, we might as well have a computer just determining whether or not w- we can, we're approving things. Like there's no human discretion at that point. And I say that's a hundred percent for the plan commission and a large percent, but not a hundred percent for the village board and this is very troubling. So, um, I strongly suggest looking back at the code and also looking back over whether this is actually what you guys agree with.
I I don't see how you can possibly say that after the drive-through discussion this evening. I mean, it.
These these were.
That that I I strenuously disagree with you, I, and that, um.
Can I ask you a question on another matter?
Okay.
I wanted to thank you for your presentation on the uh solar energy. I had one question I forgot to ask you. Is there a maintenance, an annual maintenance, a monthly maintenance, is there anything?
Not to my knowledge, nothing has needed any maintenance whatsoever.
Okay, I was asked that question, I didn't, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you. Trustee Sut.
I move we adjourn.